Welcome to the May 5, 2020 meeting of the Gary Common Council. We're excited to join you tonight with some new technology that we hope will be an improved and good experience for everyone who is tuning in via Facebook, via Zoom, Channel 4, as well as the radio. As we always do, we'll begin our council meeting with a word of prayer from our councilman and parliamentarian, Ron Brewer.
Shall we pray? Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day. We thank you for a day that we have not seen before, God. Lord, as we assemble on today to do the business of the city of Gary, oh God, we ask that you bless us with wisdom and knowledge, oh God. Oh God, we may not agree on everything, but may we come together and unite, oh God, for the betterment of this great city, oh God. We ask that you bless every bereaved family in the city, oh God, tending heal, deliver, and set free. In your son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Brewer. This time, those of us who are in the chamber will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty, justice, for all.
I want to thank Councilwoman Mary Brown, who is in the chamber with us this evening, as well as our city council attorney, Renzer Williams. At this time, Madam Clerk will have the roll call.
Councilwoman Atkins. Can you hear me? Councilman Brewer.
Here.
Councilwoman Brown.
Present.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Here.
Councilman Godwin.
Present.
Councilman Lay.
Present.
Councilman Weatherspoon.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
President Brown. Present there eight, I'm sorry, seven present, two absent.
Councilwoman Atkins appears to be present.
This present there, eight present, one absent.
With eight members present and one absent, the Gary Common Council has a quorum to conduct its business. Councilmembers, before you are the minutes of the April 7, 2020 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve said minutes?
I move.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brown. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins.
Yes.
Councilman Brewer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilman Lay.
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon. Councilman Weatherspoon.
He's on mute.
Yes, yes, yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
And President Godwin.
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, the minutes of the April 5, 2020 meeting, of the April 7, 2020 meeting of the Gary Common Council are approved. Madam Clerk, assignment of pending ordinances and resolutions on first reading.
CPO 2020-20, an ordinance amending ordinance number 842, rules of the common council as pertaining to time of regular meetings, sponsored by Councilor Chloe's Lay, Councilman at large.
Ways and Means.
CPO 2020-25, an ordinance revising the 2020 appropriations for redevelopment department operating budgets for the fiscal year beginning January the 1st, 2020, ending December 31st, 2020, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary.
Finance.
CPR 2020-06, a repeal of resolution 2748 by the Gary Common Council in regards to establishing the date and time for Gary Common Council meeting, sponsored by Councilor Chloe's Lay, Councilman at large.
Ways and Means.
This present ends the assignment of pending ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time, we will have our special and select. Are there any members who'd like to be acknowledged for special and select?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell is recognized.
Um, I would like to make an adjustment to boards and commissions for the invite.
Councilman Brewer?
You assign those, just a point of order, you assign those to committee and no one reported those out of the committee yet.
Quite very well taken. Let's go back. Councilwoman, Councilman Lay, with Ways and Means, you have two. You have CPO 2020-20 and CPR 2020-06.
We can't hear.
Can you speak up just a little?
Okay. Can you hear now?
Yes, very well.
Okay, I'd like at this time to report out council pending ordinance 2020-20. Mr. Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ty Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the committee Ways and Means have agreed to report out CPO 2020-20.
Thank you, Councilman Lay.
Mr. President.
You also, you want to go ahead and do CPR 2020-06, Councilman Lay?
Yes, that's no problem. Also, we're reporting out, at least I'm reporting out, council pending resolution 2020-06, which acts as companding, combined with 2020 that we've already reported out. Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the committee has agreed to report out CPR 2020-06.
Thank you, Councilman Lay.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown is recognized.
The Finance Committee has approved CPO 2020-25. For the record, I approved this ordinance reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
And Councilwoman.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Councilman Godwin.
Yes.
Mr. President, a majority of the Finance Committee has approved CPO 2020-25 for reporting out to the council.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This time, we will move to our special and select.
All right.
Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell.
Um, previously, I guess I'm making an adjustment on the advisory commission on the status of the blackmail. Originally, we had motioned and accepted to have Pete Maricas as the representative for the Gary Community School Corporation. Well, he resigned, so it went over to their new person, which is Dr. Paige McNulty, and she has a representative. So we need to make a motion. Well, I would like to make a motion to remove Pete Maricas' name and replace it with Paige McNulty and have Mark Spencer as her representative.
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved and properly seconded, stated motion. Any question or discussion? Seeing none.
I have, I have a question. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Councilman Lay is recognized?
If she has a representative in Mr. Spencer, why don't we just appoint Mr. Spencer?
Because it's the title. She's representative of the school board, so, and she's choosing to use a representative, just like I U N has their representative, which is a chair, and he uses someone else.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk. I think you may be muted. Madam Clerk? I think she may be muted.
Hello?
Okay, we hear you now, thank you.
Okay.
I can't hear you now.
I can see her, but her lips are moving, but no sound.
Right, we can't hear you. Clerk, Madam Clerk, we can't hear you.
Hello?
Okay, we hear you now.
Okay, Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, Dr. Pete Maricas is replaced by Dr. Paige McNulty in her capacity as the emergency manager of the Gary Community School Corporation, her designee, Mr. Mark Spencer. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell.
I have two more.
Oh, Councilwoman Caldwell is recognized.
Okay, the Gary Youth Council, their commission expired May the 1st, 2020. All interested youth, they'll send their letter of interest to the Gary Common Council. Right now, Jonathan Boos is the youth representative for the youth council, and from my understanding, he has been trying to establish something. So the correct procedure is to send their letters of interest to the Gary Common Council. And also, the redevelopment commission expires May the 20th, 2020. We have two representatives right now, so all those interested in applying for the redevelopment commission may send their letters of interest or resume to the Gary Common Council, Suite 209, 401 Broadway, Gary, Indiana, 46402. Attention, Councilwoman Linda Barnes Caldwell. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell. Any other members for special and select?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Atkins is recognized?
Thank you. Just want to do one quick announcement to the residents of the fourth. We are moving along and launching a new initiative, which actually went out via Facebook on this past Friday. So the fourth district has launched the Grass is Greener Initiative, which is in an effort to kind of help the aesthetic look of our neighborhood. So if you are a senior, age 65 and over, in need of lawn care service, the fourth district is sponsoring a certain number of positions for that service for the summer months. So please contact my admin, Ms. Karen Lane, at 219-881-1315. If you are a senior living in the fourth district in need of that service, we will do our best to take care of you over the summer months. Again, contact Ms. Karen Lane. Her number is 219-881-1315, and let her know that you are interested in signing up for the Grass is Greener Initiative.
Thank you, Councilwoman Atkins. Other members for special and select? I will just chime in, seeing no one else at this point, to say a couple things. Number one, I know in my district, the first district, there have been a lot of questions and concerns around the new tax bills that have come out, and some folks have a higher tax payment and higher assessed valuation than they had in previous years. And so in response to that, and wanting to make sure people understand how that process works, I have reached out to the Calumet Township Assessor, Jackie Collins, and I will be on May 18. ...understanding your Lake County property taxes with the Calumet Township Assessor. So there'll be more information coming out about that, but I know there's been a lot of questions. Secondly, I wanted to make sure that our nonprofit community, who we know we rely on so much, to really fill the gaps that exist in our community, and note that the Legacy Foundation has given out already $122,304 of $250,000 that have been designated for emergency relief and emergency response efforts targeting this area. And I will be putting out perhaps later this evening or tomorrow, the link to the Legacy Foundation website, where nonprofits can apply for those dollars to continue to assist our community in response to COVID-19. And also, some of you may know that I put a challenge out on Facebook last week encouraging all of us in our various roles, and specifically the common council, to take leadership in response to the businesses that I know are having a very difficult time, many of whom will not benefit from federal SBA loan initiatives, but who we want to be around to be able to serve us and help enrich our commercial corridors. And so I'm thinking of those two, three-person businesses that don't have a lot of capital, that aren't backed by a venture capital firm, and won't qualify for some of these federal dollars. And I have been in great conversation with the Legacy Foundation on that, and we're looking at opportunities to use my foundation dollars in partnership with dollars hopefully from the common councils. I'll be asking you and my colleagues for some support in that, and other branches of government, to really have a support mechanism for our small businesses. We have not done that as a city. We've done it for big companies, big corporations, but the bread and butter of this country rests on the backs of small businesses, and we need to show them the love that they give us by choosing to invest in our community. So there will be more information to come on that. And lastly, I wanted to commend Councilman Lay, who spearheaded an initiative to make our public access better in terms of our telephone communication. So those of you, the public, when you call the common council office, 219-881-1315, you'll now have a directory where you can choose, I think it's one through seven or so, a number depending on who your councilperson is, or if you'd like to speak to our office manager. We want to make sure we're efficient with the services we offer and the staffing that we have in place to serve you, the general public. That concludes my announcements. Any other members for special and select?
Mr. President.
Councilman Lay is recognized?
In terms of your interview with the Calumet Township Assessor, the auditor actually computes taxes. So the real answer would be at the auditor's office. They're responsible for computing taxes. That was a big issue that occurred several years back, primarily with the first district. I will be, and you had asked me for it, you asked me for it previously, I didn't make it available, but I will be sending in a suggestion for the, to modify the telephone system.
Yes.
Rather than 10 numbers, we can do it with five numbers, because your, for instance, your phone call go to the same, same place as two other phone calls to legislative aide Sherry. So you, and I will admit, you did ask me for it, and I will make it available if you want to take a look at that. We can reduce the 10 to five.
Absolutely. And to your point, I simply called out the assessor because that's the assessment role. I know there are some computerization issues that happened with Mr. Talis, and things that may have happened in the past, but as I see it, the assessor assesses the values and explains to the public how often that takes place, what particular methodologies are used, sales comparison, cost approach, income approach, depending on the type of property. So I'm going to start there, and certainly if we need to go further, to Mr. Talis's office, we can do that.
But only thing I was suggesting, and then I will let it go after this, they have to appeal a tax question.
Yes.
You do not actually appeal it to the Calumet Township Assessor, you appeal it probably to the county assessor and/or Mr. Talis, whoever the auditor is currently. They jump back and forth, so I'm not sure.
Absolutely, absolutely. Right now, we just want to make sure they understand the process, and part of that, as you know, is the appeals process, and I'm sure she'll be able to explain what the next steps are for that. Any other members for special and select? All right, I don't think I, I don't want to miss anybody. I know we're using technology, but I don't see anyone, so at this point, we will do, Madam Clerk, council pending ordinances and resolutions on third and or final reading.
CPO 2020-12, an ordinance approving the reorganization and renaming of various executive departments of the city of Gary, and amending salary and operating budget in connection therewith, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown is recognized?
I move to passage of CPO 2020-12 on third and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown?
I move to amendment by substitution, CPO 2020-12.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Question.
Councilman Lay is recognized?
I'd like to know specifically the changes made between the two.
Okay. Would you like me to speak, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Attorney Colvin, Chief of Staff is recognized?
The amended ordinance, or what would be amended today, is 20-12, which removes the media fund budget, the salary and operating budgets that have been previously included in that particular ordinance. So it's everything except those budgets.
Could you be a little bit more specific? What dollar amount was removed in the amendment?
The, the actual budgets, the previous, the previous submission made changes to the salary budget and the operating budget. Since those budgets will no longer be included in the ordinance, the 2020 media fund budget will remain as it was passed by the council at the end of 2019.
So that's the $75,000, is that what you're saying?
Yes, originally, in the original budget for 2020, there was a $75,000 position for communications director, and there was, I think, $30,000 in professional services. Those line items will remain the same, since we've taken those items, that particular budget, out of this ordinance, and it remains as it was originally passed last year.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the amendment by substitution?
Mr. President.
Councilman Brewer is recognized?
One question, so if we have removed the media budget from here, what is the plan from the administration? Are they planning to come back with us with some other revisions, or are they just going to leave it like that for the rest of the year?
The media fund budget will be intact, as it was previously passed, so it leaves room for either someone to be hired or for the administration to make some other provision for the handling of media.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell is recognized?
Uh, Ms. Colvin, that position we had for the fire department, did we keep that, or did we remove that also?
That position is still in the budget.
It's still in there, okay.
Still in, it's still in 2020-12.
We didn't find any Gary citizens to fill that position.
We have not, as of this point. It has not been filled, the position has not been filled.
Any other questions or discussion on the amendment by substitution? So what we will first do is vote on the amendment by substitution, and then we will vote on the CPO 2020-12 as amended by substitution. Is that correct? All right, so roll call, Madam Clerk, that we would vote on the amendment by substitution of CPO 2020-12.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Godwin?
Yes.
The vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2020-12 is amended by substitution. This time, we'll have a vote.
Mr. President.
Councilman Brewer is recognized?
I do have one question before we make the vote there. I don't know where we stand far as the finances inside the city with the whole thing with the COVID-19. You would think this might be a time to look and where we could make some deductions and some cuts, some kind of way. I'm pretty sure we have made a significant lost revenue significantly inside the city of Gary with our facilities, with collections, and that, and that attribute, and we will probably see more when we get our June collection rate and tax revenue. I'm just wondering, far as administration, far as collection, what are their forecasts with us going forward? And we'll probably talk more about this toward the end with the mayor being on, but I would just like to see since we're going to make this change with the budget. I know we're not changing the bottom line, but is there any way to see any type of savings inside the change at this time with the whole coronavirus? But we started this early part of year before we went through any of this, and now we have a pandemic that's going on where government, government's been shut down for almost two months now.
Thank you, Councilman Brewer, and I certainly echo those concerns. I know that our casinos, the casino, has been drastically hit. It appears, I believe, Hammond announced they aren't going to open until June. And I know that our $6 million roughly that we receive annually is in large part, or in total part, driven by attendance. And obviously, no one will have attended for potentially eight to 10 weeks, which might affect even their bottom line. Councilman Lay is recognized?
Yeah, Mr. President, that may not be quite accurate. I believe the local development agreement is guarantee on the 6 million. I think the question will become, you will get it at year end, but it does not matter about the performance of, let's say, Majestic Star. As I understand the local development agreement, and I did, matter of fact, you may remember I indicated to you I would contact the casino people concerning what they would do with that.
Yes, and I also spoke with one of their representatives, and I don't think I feel as assured as you do. Nevertheless, I'm a country boy, you can't get blood out of a turnip. So you can have a minimum and have a guarantee, but if the money isn't fair, my only concern is that if in the future, they could appeal to the state for some relief from this obligation. Of course, this is just hypothetical.
Yeah.
In terms of our planning, in the event that we need to make some cuts, because we anticipate there will be a hit. because we anticipate there will be a hit to the taxes. We know the circuit breaker is kicking in this year, and a lot of factors are going to affect our revenue. We know we have to sell leaseback that has to be paid for, that's an intercept. So we have tremendous obligations that are coming in. I will say that I want to thank Attorney Colvin for providing the requested financial information in terms of the city's bank accounts, accounts receivables, and accounts payable. And I think even in this particular ordinance, there's a part of it that already existed but has not really been being followed, and certainly prior to this administration. I don't think it was followed with any regularity. And that is that the controller, or whoever the controller, the action controller is, is to provide to this body a financial accounting by the 15th every month. So that's already in the law, I don't think that's been happening, but we are looking forward to that starting to happen. And so that this body, when it's making decisions to add, to cut, and so forth, will at least have a sense. You can't really fulfill your fiduciary obligations if you don't know what the finances are. So I'm glad to see that.
Mr. President.
Councilman Lay is recognized.
Oh, as opposed to us having two different answers, you having one, I'm not sure who you talked to, I talked to Keeler. What I would suggest is the administration get an official understanding whether they're going to follow the local development agreement. I, I think they, they should do that. I mean, we shouldn't say, just leave it where it is. I do not believe the administration would have a problem trying to determine whether we get the $6 million. And as I understand the agreement, we get it, even if the casino was not in operation, that we would, we would get the $6 million. So I would, I would ask that certainly that the administration go beyond our discussions and get something in writing. Well, however they choose to do it, that we're going to get that $6 million.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown is recognized.
I also wanted to mention that the governor signed an executive order for property taxes. So people who are paying taxes, not, not people who have escrow, but people who are paying property taxes have until June, July 10th to pay their taxes. So I don't know how soon we will be receiving the dollars that we would normally get from the county for taxes.
I think it is somewhere around there, there was July 10th or fifth.
July, July 10th.
Okay.
Instead of, instead of, instead of May, instead of May, not until July.
Well, I know we have Attorney Colvin, I, I think a great counselor is on, and he says it may be July 15th. 15, I think it's July 15th.
Okay.
Okay. July 11th. July 11th. In any, in any event, in any event, we won't get it as soon as we used to.
Right.
So I know that that question came up at the last meeting, and so I will simply defer. I think we've asked a lot of questions, and we have the Chief of Staff as well as the mayor on the line. So if either party has something they'd like to add.
Mr. Chair, it's the mayor.
Mayor is recognized.
Yeah, we'll defer to the end of the meeting, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about CPO 2020-12 as amended by substitution? Seeing none, roll call Madam clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell? Councilwoman Caldwell?
Muted.
I think she may be muted.
I muted, I'm sorry, yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2020-12 as amended by substitution passes and is so ordered.
CPO 2020-17, in ordinance establishing a new fund and department budget for Gary City Court's second chance enhancement program, sponsored by Judge Deirdre Monroe, Gary City Court.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown is recognized.
I move for passage of CPO 2020-17 on third and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilwoman Caldwell, we have overview at this time. Who will be providing the overview? This is coming out of the courts, I don't know whether, I don't think the judge is on.
She's not here.
Not here.
Okay, do you have an overview, Councilwoman Brown?
Well, what I know is that there was a grant in the amount of $219,000 that they received, and so this was just an ordinance to actually to receive that grant for $219,000.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown, any questions or discussion?
And it was going to be dispersed over a three-year period, it was over three years.
Any questions or discussion on CPO 2020-17? Seeing none, roll call Madam clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins? Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams? Councilman Williams?
Yes.
President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2020-17 passes and is so ordered.
CPO 2020-18, in ordinance appropriating 2020 budgets for the operating expenses of grants, donations, special revenue funds for the city of Gary for the fiscal year beginning January the first, 2020, ending December 31st, 2020, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown is recognized.
I move for passage of CPO 2020-18 on third and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Caldwell.
Mr. President, Mr. President. I move to amend by substitution, CPO 2020-18.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Lyndon Barnes Caldwell to amend by substitution.
Right.
So at this time, are there any questions or discussions?
Uh, Mr.
Councilman Lay is recognized.
I'd like to know specifically what are the changes between the two documents? In other words, if it's a minor amendment, we don't have to be doing it by substitution. You can amend by deletion, insertion within the change. So there should be a major change, this is a one-page ordinance.
I, I agree, Councilman Lay.
May I speak?
Attorney Colvin is recognized.
Yes, of course, based on Councilman Lay's statement, this is a minor change. There was an error in the original submission in the budget. The basic items still remain the same. So if there, if there is no need for an amendment by substitution, then that's fine.
So are we doing an amendment by insertion or deletion?
We could do amendment by insertion.
Okay, so what are we inserting?
We are substituting one budget sheet for another, which has the typographical errors corrected.
Okay.
What's the typographical error?
Hold on just a second. Veronica, can you unmute?
Yes.
Can you tell him the difference between the two budgets that we just submitted?
Well, at the beginning, Veronica from the Gary Health Department, so what happened, that some of the salaries wasn't correct on the first budget since I came in, noticing that some of the, the FICA and the PERF was incorrect on the budgets. So we had to make those changes. Yeah, it was calculated incorrect.
PERF and the FICA.
Correct.
So Councilman, is that sufficient, Councilman Lay?
I'm, I'm sorry, as the president would say, I'm a little slow on this. What salaries was there, and that's all I'm asking, just put it down.
Well, what happened, what happened, she calculated the FICA and the PERF and everything incorrect, so.
Hold on, Veronica.
Okay.
We have two budgets in this.
Oh.
One is for link to, lost to.
Linkage to care, linkage to care, uh-huh. And that, all, all that PERF, all the, the PERF was incorrect on that. The fiscal department did that, made that change. So I had to come back and recalculate those numbers, so I put the correct numbers in it, and she said it was an oversight.
That's, that's the linkage to care?
That was the linkage to care and also the STD budget as well.
Mr. Chair.
Attorney Williams is recognized.
Yeah, I think it's moot as it relates to this issue, because it does sound like this is simply a scribbler's error, and there was an error in calculation. But I'll disagree with Attorney Lay, and I'm sure at peril. I, I think it's quite dangerous when you deviate from the substitution process, as I don't know who makes the determination as to what a large enough error to constitute a substitution and what's not. I would caution the council to just continue with the precedent, and unless it is a scribbler's error, then I would suggest that you proceed with substitutions as you have in the past. I don't know who would make the determination of whether an error is sufficient enough to constitute an insertion or deletion. I, I think the substitution protects you completely without any cause of reservation. Again, on this matter, I think it's moot because it seems to be a calculation error. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilman, my ears recognized.
And I certainly will not, on this one, I probably will agree with Attorney Williams, but that means we are saying in all Robert Rule's order, we're not going to delete, we're not going to insert, we're just simply going to go by substitution. Now, that procedure probably hasn't been that way all of the time. In other words, the last time I was on the council, we actually said what we were, what we were making the change. Other than that, you will always have to ask what it was to where it went. But if that is what the council wants to do, is substitute, that's fine with me. I just think sometime you may be doing an ordinance where you only change the paragraph, and now we now have to go back and read the entire ordinance in terms of the substitution. But that's fine, if the council, if you want the council wants to do that, I have, I have no, no question about it. But the rule that was passed out to each councilman said not only that it was a substitution, there was an error as to what happened after that, like it went back to committee or something. But that's fine.
But I, I will say that I agree with Councilman Lay. Amendment by substitution is, is an enormous thing, it's a major change. And I do think that in the public interest when we're making these amendments, and we aren't saying what exactly it is, is no one knows what we're doing. In fact, the problem comes out of you know what we're doing, which is what prompts Councilman Lay to ask the question that all of us should be asking. So I would say this is something we can take up at another time, but I do think we need to review our practices to be clearer.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown is recognized.
In the past, in the past, when we have had a substitution, we have always said what it was, and if it was a small amount, we said it. And, and so we just said what it was and moved on, okay? So it has never, it has never been a big deal.
One last comment, Mr. Chair, if I may. And of course, I, I will speak with Attorney Lay offline concerning this. I don't want us to get confused as we did with the past council. We are not governed by Robert Rules of Order. We are governed by our own procedures, you adopted them years ago, I'm sure Attorney Lay will know the date. Our rules say that Robert Rules of Order only apply where our rules are silent. And in our rules, we have a procedure for substitution. We do not have a procedure for insertion and deletion. That's not in our rules. I'm simply instructing you all to be governed by the rules that you all set forth.
All right, we're all going to be Robert's real experts by the end of tonight. I know Attorney Ray has something else he wants to say, but.
No, I don't.
So at this time, we have a, a vote to amend by substitution, CPO 2020-18. It's been moved and properly seconded already, and we ask for a roll call, Madam clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams? President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2020-18 is amended by substitution. At this point, we will now take up the vote to pass CPO 2020-18 as amended by substitution.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2020-18 as amended by substitution passes and is so ordered.
CPO 2020-19, in ordinance appropriating 2020 budgets for the operating expenses of grants, donations, special revenue funds for the city of Gary Commission for Women for the fiscal year beginning April the first, 2020, ending September 30th, 2020, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown is recognized.
I move for passage of CPO 2020-19 on third and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell. Is there an overview at this time?
Yes, CPO 2020-19 is a grant, governs a grant of social services block grant that comes to the Commission for Women. It is in the amount of $5,600, and is for the purchase of bed bug-resistant mattresses for the shelter.
Any questions or discussions with council members? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call Madam clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2020-19 passes and is so ordered.
CPO 2020-21, in ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 9, Section 10, 111, regarding public restrooms in gasoline service stations, sponsored by Councilman William Godwin, First District.
Councilman Brewer is recognized.
Mr. President, I move for CPO 2020-21 to go back to committee, be deferred back to committee.
Second.
And that's a committee, committee meeting on May the 12th at 5:00 PM.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO twenty twenty dash twenty one uh, is moved back to the Planning and Development Committee. With a meeting on May twelfth at five P M.
Mr. President, pending ordinance and resolutions on third and final.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will have our council pending ordinances and resolutions on second reading.
CPO two thousand and twenty dash twenty, an ordinance amending ordinance number eight forty-two, Rules of the Common Council as pertaining to time of regular meetings. Sponsored by Cloris Lay, Councilman Large.
Councilman Lay is recognized.
Mr. President, there is no objection. I would prefer to go to the resolution, uh, repeal it and then pass twenty.
Absolutely.
Twenty twenty dash six first.
Yes, sir. Madam Clerk, did you get that?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
C P, CPR two thousand and twenty dash oh six, uh, repeal the resolution twenty seven forty-eight by the Gary Common Council in regards to establishing the date and time for Gary Common Council meeting, sponsored by Cloris Lay, Councilman Large.
Um, Mr. President, uh, these basically are companion actions. Uh, back in two thousand and one, they attempted to modify an ordinance with a resolution, which I believe caused a binary problem, or maybe a major problem trying to locate it. So at the end between twenty twenty dash zero six and twenty twenty dash twenty, we will go back and reestablish the same time we're meeting on at six o'clock. Uh, so as a result, I'm asking the council, and I probably will rarely do this, that we pass twenty twenty dash zero six on all three readings. And anyone need a further explanation, I certainly am prepared to give it.
So I think what we want to do is to entertain a motion to add this to the agenda for third and final, or just to pass it on all three readings, I want to make sure I'm right. So we, we have, we have a motion to pass uh, CPO, CPR twenty twenty dash zero six on all three readings, and just for clarification's sake, uh, this requires a unanimous vote of all members who are present. So at this time, I believe a motion has been made.
Mr. President.
Councilman Brewer is recognized.
So this resolution here, well, yes, it's a resolution, um, can you clarify what this resolution is? Is it just a, the time and date, that's it in this resolution?
Well, the, the resolution, they attempted in two thousand and one, uh, February, I'm not sure what the date was in February. What they did, they, they modified our meeting time, it went from eight to seven to six. And, and the council has been meeting at six since two thousand and one. But it's a problem because if they modified in twenty, in twenty, let me look it up, they, I believe it was the, the resolution's twenty seven forty-eight uh, back there. And, and they, it was twenty seven forty-eight. That resolution was incorrect, it was done by the council staff, I believe. So what I'm doing is just straightening it up, I believe the clerk, uh, 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 Ms. Reynolds can explain what I'm exactly doing here. I'm straightening it up to correct, the ordinance should be only amended and modified by an ordinance. You cannot, and eight forty-two is an ordinance, so if you look in the first paragraph of two, twenty twenty dash oh six, I identify what eight forty-two is. It's an ordinance that was passed, our master ordinance almost passed in two thousand, I'm sorry, nineteen sixty, it's rather old. So as you amend things, you should go back to this ordinance if at all possible. They just did it with a resolution. It, it, it may be more of a technicality, but I, I think we should always amend ordinances with ordinances, amend resolutions with resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman Lay, uh, any other questions before we take our vote?
No, I don't have any questions, Mr. President. I do remember when that was changed. We were meeting at seven o'clock and we changed the meetings to six o'clock because the meetings were, it, it was an inordinate amount of time that we were spending, so we changed the time. I was not aware that it had to be an ordinance instead of a resolution, and so we passed it. And then that's what happened, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown.
Well, Mr.
Councilman Brewer?
Well, couldn't it, couldn't it be a resolution, um, because the council still have to put out the correct notice for a meeting anyway?
Well.
Councilman Lay is recognized.
What, what established, what established the meeting time at eight o'clock was, uh, council ordinance eight forty-two.
Okay.
All right, it was changed to seven to six. Why would you, I believe the clerk will attest to, ordinances are filed in one way and resolutions are filed in another way. So if we're going to modify an ordinance, eight forty-two has been an ordinance since nineteen sixty. That's approximately sixty years. So if we're going to modify an ordinance, I believe we've had that same argument to some extent coming out of redevelopment. You know, we do it, did it one way and they want to do it another way. This is really, you will end up in the same place you are. You will end up at a six o'clock meeting, I'm just simply saying it should be in, in ordinance. And I su, I suspect the, uh, the deputy clerk will, uh, explain what I'm doing. They file them separately as I understand them, as I understand it, so that's all we're doing here. So no, I don't think you should modify any ordinance with a resolution, ordinances are basically laws. This, this, so this is, this is the official meeting of the council.
Mr. Chair.
Attorney Williams is recognized.
Yes, uh, Attorney Lay is absolutely correct, this is simply correcting an error that was done several years ago. An ordinance is the law of the city, a resolution is simply eh, eh, the will or the suggestion of the city. An ordinance absolutely has to be modified by ordinance. Uh, so this indeed is correcting a mistake that was previously made.
Any other questions or discussion about, uh, CPO, CPR twenty twenty dash zero six? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams? Councilman Williams?
Yes.
President Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPR twenty twenty dash zero six passes on all three readings and is so ordered.
You have to call for another vote, uh, Mr. President. The first vote, first vote is established, we can do it on all three readings. Now we have to see if it's going to pass, you need a super majority to pass it.
All right, thank you, Councilman Lay, Attorney Williams agrees. And at this time, we will vote to pass. In fact, we already voted to do it on all three readings, now we're going to vote on the substance of CPR twenty twenty dash zero six. Um, is there, we don't need to take another motion, I don't believe. We should do another, we should do a motion, uh, to pass it, um, in terms of the substance.
So moved, uh, Mr. President.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Brewer, questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPR twenty twenty dash zero six passes and is ordered.
CPO two thousand and twenty dash twenty, an ordinance amending ordinance number eight four-two, Rules of the Common Council as pertaining to the time of regular meetings. Sponsored by Cloris Lay, Councilman Large.
Uh, Mr. President, I move.
Councilman Lay, Councilman Lay is recognized.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I move the passage of twenty twenty dash twenty on all three readings. If you go to two in the ordinance or the second paragraph, "All regular meetings shall be held in the council chambers and city hall on the first and third Tuesday evening each and every month, beginning at six o'clock unless otherwise ordered." All this is doing is, is amending eight forty-two, the ordinance eight forty-two, to do exactly what we're doing now. It just now will be attached to eight forty-two by the clerk, and so we know how we got to six o'clock. When, uh, when I first inquired, uh, how we were meeting at six, it was unclear to me until, I guess later, the clerk discovered it, it was in the form of a resolution as opposed to an ordinance. But all twenty twenty dash twenty is doing is saying we will meet at six o'clock, first and third Tuesday of each month. Therefore, I would move that, uh, we pass this on all three readings.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by no Councilman Williams, I'm not sure who else, uh, that we will accept this on all three readings. Uh, question or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO twenty twenty dash twenty is accepted for consideration on all three readings. Now do we have a motion to pass CPO twenty twenty dash twenty?
I move that we pass twenty, twenty, dash twenty.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell, any questions or discussion?
Just a comment, Mr. President.
Councilman Brewer is recognized.
That the record showed that Mr. Lay has had a resolution and an ordinance passed on it.
Ma, Madam, Madam Clerk, please enter Councilman Brewer's statement into the official minutes.
Yeah, I, let me add an addition. Every time you're correcting something, I probably will not object to all three readings. It's got to be two together now, don't bring one.
Thank you, Councilman Brewer and Lay. Uh, no other questions or discussions, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO twenty twenty dash twenty passes and is so ordered.
CPO two thousand and twenty dash twenty-five, an ordinance revising the two thousand and twenty appropriations for redevelopment department operating budget for the fiscal year beginning January the first two thousand and twenty, ending December thirty-first two thousand and twenty, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown is recognized.
I move for passage of CPO two thousand and twenty twenty-five on second reading, Finance Committee meeting, on Tuesday, May twelfth at five thirty P M, and a public hearing on May nineteenth.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell, uh, any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins? Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO twenty twenty dash twenty-five passes on second reading with a committee hearing to be held on Tuesday, May twelfth at five thirty P M, with a public hearing, uh, on May, Tuesday, May nineteenth at six o'clock P M.
Mr. President, pending ordinance and resolutions on second reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we have our mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council, how's everyone this evening?
Good, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Good, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening also. So, uh, just a couple of reports and perhaps, uh, some additional information. I'm almost certain that all of you had an opportunity to hear the flyover this afternoon that was the one hundred and twenty-second fighter wing out of, uh, Fort Wayne, Indiana, flying over to honor our first responders. Had an opportunity to thank, uh, them as well, but I wanted to mention, I, I forget his rank, but Mr. Stoller of the, uh, National Guard, and let's get his name and rank proper here. He certainly worked for that, Colonel Michael Stoller, for choosing Gary to fly over in honor of our first responders. Secondly, um, wanna mention that, as you all know, since the beginning of COVID here, actually before the beginning of it, this administration responded in, uh, due fashion and established protocol for not only our city government, but certainly for the city as a whole. We had no idea to what level this COVID situation would rise, but we certainly knew that we had a responsibility to be responsive to our constituents and to provide them with the best and most up-to-date information that we possibly could. And to that extent, I have to acknowledge the staff of Dr. Walker and the Gary Health Department, Veronica who's on the line this evening, who's done a wonderful job with communicating with the state and CDC as well, in addition to helping us with our daily updates. Also have to recognize our Director of Communication, since he took this job, certainly has done an excellent job in making sure that the city is represented in the best fashion that we possibly can, and thank him for his assistance with our daily updates. We've reduced them down to weekly updates unless, of course, there's something that's relevant that comes up, uh, such as the reopening of the state of Indiana. I'm not sure how many of you have viewed the governor's order in full detail, but specifically, as you may or may not know, Lake Marion and Cass County had extended, uh, restrictions placed on their particular counties. And to that end, this Friday, we will be announcing, after a very well, long, arduous task of trying to come up with a concise reopening plan that would take into consideration the safety of not only our citizens, but in this instance, our employees as well, because some of them will be returning to city hall. So Friday at eleven thirty, we will conduct our weekly update and share the preliminary plan that we have for opening, uh, our city, as well as some direction for business entities, churches, and that alike. Um, Mr. Chair, there's been considerable conversation and questions this evening about the state of our city's finances, and, uh, that's actually pleasing because that within itself is probably the single most important issue that we face. Uh, it's been like that since the, uh, certainly this administration, but prior to that. And, uh, unfortunately, some of the questions that were asked this evening, we're simply not prepared to answer, largely because what we've discovered is that, uh, for some considerable time, um, accurate information just wasn't the, uh, call of the day. And to that extent, we, um, have, as you all know, released our city controller, and the reason that was is because. And the reason that was is because her responsibility certainly is providing this administration with an accurate accounting of our finances. And after one hundred days, she simply was not able to do it to the satisfaction of this administration. Having said that, Mr. Chair, what we have discovered is that, uh, and some of you may be aware, certainly some of you veteran council members, is that our finances are in a complete disarray. And it's our intention to provide this council with very most recent and accurate information as possible. But to do that, it certainly takes time. Um, it's unreasonable to expect that this administration can come in and turn around a situation, uh, in one hundred days, certainly one that is as grave as we face. Uh, but rest assured that we have every desire of doing so. And in addition to that, um, I guess the most unsettling part of it to us is that because of our financial situation and the uncertainty of it, it doesn't allow us to fulfill our statutory obligation of delivering that to you in the state of the city. Talked to our acting controller today, who's also, uh, has served as our chief of staff, um, and found out that we will in about three or four weeks be able to give the council the most up-to-date, accurate information that we possibly can. But, Mr. Chair, to be certain, it doesn't stop there. One of the things that we talked about before I took office, certainly on the campaign trail and all during the transition, was the need for this city to be audited. And to that extent, we certainly are looking to do just that. Um, uh, some of you may recall that, um, this administration, and it was prior to us taking office, was extremely essential in the realizing of a better rate and better terms with sale leaseback. And I mentioned that to say, Mr. Chair, is that we have a, uh, very competent staff of individuals who are helping us to not only determine the accurate state of the city finances, but to operate in, uh, what could be considered a, uh, almost undaunting task, uh, as we proceed. Certainly if you couple and add COVID, uh, COVID nineteen situation to that, it only makes it that much more challenging. But I have to acknowledge the work of the staff who continues to be committed on a daily basis, some of them working overtime and, uh, in some instances without pay to ensure the success of the city. And I appreciate the concern of the council, uh, because to me, I take it as a sign that we can all work together to establish the success of the city. In fact, uh, that there's no other way that 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 will be accomplished. But, uh, at this time, Mr. Chair, I'll certainly entertain any questions that we can answer relative to the finances.
All right, thank you, Mayor Prince. A question is set this time for the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, um, Councilman Brewer. Um, I understand your situation with the finances of the city. I know it's very challenging. Um, but I have something outside of that and I'll wait till you get that to us in the next couple of weeks there about the finance. But can you give us some detail about the recycling program? And I got about three other things I want to address also too. Um, about the recycling program inside the city also.
Councilman, why don't you state all of them? I I prefer to just answer them all at once.
Okay, the recycling program, the work that's going on on Twenty-Fifth Avenue. Um, you are aware that we have paved Twenty-Fifth Avenue and making sure that those roads are put back in a decent state, uh, compared to what we have seen throughout the city with the other construction happening, with, um, the outside vendors that have been tearing up a lot of the roads that we have here repaired inside the city. Um, also the work that's going on on Lake Street there, um, give an update on, uh, uh, new construction that started there on Lake Street and also a crime report inside the city of Gary.
So the last one was a crime report, Councilman?
Yes, with the homicide rate, um, the homicides that's happening inside our city, what is our approach?
Yeah, sure. So, Councilman, you know, questions like this are better addressed when we're prepared for them. And certainly we would have had the police chief here, who's more adequately prepared to answer the specific approach, uh, to that. I can tell you that the police department, the men and women of the department are working diligently to not only address the crime, but certainly to make sure that people are adhering to the executive order, the social distancing, all while being, uh, starved or depleted of the necessary resources that they needed to, that they need to operate. And so, um, if there are questions like this above that nature, it would just be a little better for you, myself, and certainly for the viewing audience, if we have them ahead of time and we can make sure that the adequate personnel or certainly that we could be prepared to answer your question for you. Uh, not sure what the question.
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me just go back to the crime. It was definitely.
Mr. Councilman, Mr. Councilman.
Councilwoman Brewer is recognized.
Mr. Councilman, I was still speaking.
About, well, give me one minute. I don't want you to go to the next subject with us without us.
Mr. Councilman.
It was definitely in detail about the homicide rate. I want to be more in detail what I'm talking about. Um, these homicides have not just started inside our city, but we are starting to see them escalate with the whole COVID and the shut, um, shutdown of the city also. So I just wanted you to address it at this time if you could. If you cannot, I do understand it also.
So, Mr. Uh, Councilman, um, I'm not certain that your determination of escalation. Certainly, there's a lot of violence in this city and you know it and I know it as well. But to just blatantly throw terms out like escalating, you know, certainly would suggest that there's some deficiencies on this and I'm just not certain that's true. If you could share some very specific statistics. But again, I'll just defer back to my earlier point in that these questions would be better answered by the appropriate personnel, the people that we hired to perform public safety. And in this instance, it would be our police chief. So, your other question was relative to recycling. We will begin recycling again on the eighteenth of May, which notifications will be going out in a timely fashion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first, excuse me, um.
There was a, there was a question also about the Lake Street construction.
And the Twenty-Fifth Avenue construction.
So I didn't understand the Twenty-Fifth Avenue question, uh, but Lake Street construction has started again, as you all know. And it's my understanding that it's progressing according to schedule.
Let me just add in here if I may. Um, I've obviously gotten a lot of complaints. I'm not blaming you. Uh, I recognize we have a lot going on. Uh, but we did notify the business community. Dan Vicari at the Sanitary District, who I believe is still overseeing the project, did do that. But a lot of residents, uh, wanted to hear from the Board of Public Works or the Department of Public Works to know exactly what the schedule is, to hear their concerns and so forth, because obviously we haven't been able to meet in the ways we traditionally would have. But I would just urge someone from Public Works to put out easy, resident-friendly, usable, uh, lock feature, just to let residents know this is how long your street's going to be blocked off and here's what you can expect, just a basic timeline and communication on that.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. That's actually being planned now. I spoke with Mr. Vicari a couple of days ago and he's working on doing just that, preparing something. It'll be disseminated to the council first as well as the business owners on Lake Street.
Thank you.
Um, there was one last one. The work that's happened on Twenty-Fifth, there's pipes, um, seeing like there's been a bit of underground piping that's going to be taking place. Um, we've seen on Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, those are some of the main streets where we have to hit the state did work. And then afterward, we had, um, utility companies came in, did work, and the work was not put back in a, uh, workmanship manner. I was just trying to ask, what are we doing to make sure we ensure that these roads are put back in place? And not just there, but throughout the city going forward, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you for the question, Mr. Councilman, one I'd love to answer. I assure you, we'll be, we'll do better than what's previously been done. Thank you.
Let me just, uh, I wanted to, while we're talking about infrastructure and streets. I know that, uh, part of, uh, the park was closed off a couple of weeks ago. And I would just ask, I don't, I know you can do whatever you want to do in terms of closing off streets, but I would certainly ask and perhaps other council members might appreciate it as well that prior to deciding to close off certain streets or maybe while you're doing it, if we could get some communication, I'd rather not find out on Facebook, uh, that a major thoroughfare in my district is being closed off and then have people texting and calling me about something of which I'm unaware. So I would just appreciate more, uh, communication in advance, uh, and and not finding out on social media.
Sure. So, 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 Councilman, um, it's a good point and it's certainly a legitimate request. However, um, I have to point out that situations surrounding COVID are unpredictable. And to that extent, we found ourselves with people certainly disregarding the executive order. And to that point, they were social gathering, so it was a spontaneous decision and, uh, one that actually was pretty successful because we were immediately able to deter the traffic. And in fact, in some regards, um, as you know, because you live in the area, certainly it didn't last as long as we anticipated it may have, the closures, that is. But with doing so, uh, it appears that people are respecting the order a little bit more. And so, thank you.
Thank you. I think Councilman Williams earlier attempted to be recognized. Councilman Williams?
Uh, that was not me.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Council, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to, um, I want to commend you and I would like to commend Ms. uh, Mati Fitzgerald for your efforts in removing the fourteen thousand tires that were there at General Services. Um, I don't know if any of my colleagues have seen that, but that was an absolute environmental nightmare. Now, this is a continuous problem that we have with tires being, uh, disposed on our streets and our alleyways. Do you have a plan whatsoever to, uh, address this continuous problem? And also, uh, we're also having an issue as it relates to, uh, tree debris that was left over from a storm that was from last year. It's cluttering our alleyways and things as well. Do you also have a plan for dealing with that? Thank you.
It's a great question. So, Councilman, absolutely. Um, our priorities haven't changed since, uh, last year before we took office and, you know, I continue to state them. It was to, uh, clean up, right? And that means clean up everything. Certainly our city finances, which we continue to address, the aesthetics of the city. We want to clean all of the trash that's in the city. But not only clean it up, we want to maintain it. And so to answer your question as short, we absolutely have a plan for that. As it relates to the tires, that one's a little bit more challenging because, as you know, those fourteen thousand tires were accumulated over the last eight years. And to that extent, we got rid of them and certainly they are accumulating again already. In fact, I believe it was two thousand and eight or nine when, um, and I I may be mistaken, but Ms. Mati Fitzgerald shared that with me when I, them, actually first cited the city for those tires. And to that point, nothing had, uh, really changed. And so, um, what is certain is that it's an extremely expensive venture and we certainly can't continue to go on, uh, approaching it like that. But in addition to the tires, you know, our, one of our primary goals as we try to clean up the city and encourage others, uh, to do so, is that we must clean up all of our city properties first. And, uh, that includes city hall. Um, you know, all of our properties are in disarray. And if all of you have not, I certainly welcome you and encourage you to take a very extensive look at every property the city owns. And so to that extent, part of our plan is to address our house first. And it starts with the lots at General Services or any building or facility that the City of Gary owns. And it includes, uh, demolition activity as well as removal of debris that's accumulated for years. And, you know, that within itself is part of the plan. Yes, sir.
Are there questions for the?
I just wanted to be clear that you said that you're gonna start recycling again on the eighteenth of this month? Did I, did I understand that?
We are going to restart. That's all of us. Yes, we are going to start recycling again on the eighteenth of this month.
And so they will be picking it up again? Am I clear?
I just want to be clear.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Because we got an email yesterday that said it was, you know, I guess for the foreseeable future, it was, it was going to be councils. So I guess that's why there was some confusion.
Okay.
Sure where that came from. Certainly didn't come from our administration.
Okay, good.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to see if you could, um, give an update and again with the COVID nineteen situation that might not even be on the radar. But I've gotten a lot of questions from residents in terms of our timetable, um, and when we will get back out to fill in the potholes. So, um, if you have any information about that or if you have any recommendations, because I also know we have resource constraints in General Services in terms of how we could provide, um, those respective areas that probably need more attention, um, to to the administration's liking so that we can kind of take care of that.
Great question, Councilwoman. And so pothole work is actually going on now and has been for the last couple of weeks. I would just suggest calling, uh, Ms. Dee Barber or Rachel Morgan Caesar, who actually are responsible or or head that department. Ms. Dee Barber, obviously head of Public Works and Rachel of General Services, uh, give them the request. And typically they're able to respond in a pretty timely fashion. Um, as it relates to COVID, the timetable, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we, since the beginning, have followed the governor's protocol. And he certainly has established that, uh, for Lake County, our reopen date, uh, is May the eleventh. However, there are a number of restrictions that are associated with that particular date in that order. And so our team, in addition to developing a back-to-work plan, is certainly developing a precise protocol for our, uh, constituents. What's important to note is that, as evidenced in our daily updates and certainly the weekly video update, is we continue to see an uptick in cases. Fortunately, over the last few days, we have not realized any additional deaths here. But, uh, we're averaging about twenty-five new cases a day. And to that extent, it certainly suggests that we are not, by any stretch of the imagination, out of the woods here. What is consoling is that the governor in a conversation that I had with him a couple of weeks ago, and he's made it abundantly clear in, uh, his messages, is that if local municipalities need to extend restrictions, that he certainly is receptive to that and would absolutely have no concerns about that whatsoever. And so what's important, and we, we could come out with, you know, the exact protocol that the governor established. However, uh, as we know and has been evidenced in the, the, certainly in the news, uh, recently, is that African-American communities are affected at a greater rate than other communities. And to that extent, uh, being in between two hot pockets, Michigan and Illinois both, we have to be extremely careful and extremely prudent before we reopen. Our protocol for the city opening certainly, uh, goes along or includes, uh, protocol for employees coming back and exactly how we're going to address and ensure the safety of all employees, whether, uh, it be ones who have been or not been diagnosed, uh, COVID positive. The point is, is that, uh, there's certain protocols that have been established by the medical community that, uh, have been proven to work, um, and they may include up to, uh, the requirement for face masks as well.
Councilman Williams is recognized.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for, uh, the time you've given six district. Uh, since the COVID nineteen situation started, you have come out and attended through several of the residents' concerns from, hey, to, uh, flooding and sewer issues. And I thank you for your assistance with General Services. We were able to get most of that taken care of.
Well, thank you, Councilman White, as you, uh, or Williams, I'm sorry, having a flashback there. Um, yeah, you know, uh, one of the easiest things to do is to be accessible and to, you know, um, be the example, if you will. And so, uh, I'll do the same for any district or I'd gladly cross the city. And so, uh, I'll do the same for any district or I'd gladly cross the city with any council person who, uh, is interested in working and are right along or, uh, at least in concert with, with, with myself as well as the rest of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work out there.
I have a few questions. Um, number one, uh, I wanted to ask about this recycling again because, uh, council members Mary Brown, Cozy Wetherspoon, Brewer, Williams and Atkins and myself received an email yesterday afternoon. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page because we're certainly going to get questions about this, uh, from Ms. Fitzgerald, who heads that department, saying that she wanted to give us an update on the recycling collection and it, and that it has been postponed until further notice and that residents will be contacted via Facebook, Gary TV and mailouts and Gary sanitation bills with the date that the collection will resume. So either, is Ms. Fitzgerald incorrect?
So, um, short answer is yes, right? Everything that I told you prior to that question was accurate, uh, the 18th is the date. The reason, um, and it's certainly not an excuse, but a fact, is Ms. Fitzgerald was not abreast of the latest developments that took place today. What, what's required with the start of the recycling was an amendment in our contract with our waste hauler, um, and to that extent, she wasn't privy to that information and therefore, you know, was doing her best to keep you informed as well as all of the members of the administration. But to be certain, that was not accurate. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to ask about the hiring of a new controller and sort of what the timeline is for that and what the, and thank you all so much for sending the, uh, I think it's about 30 almost, uh, the, uh, contracts, the professional services contracts that have been issued since the beginning of the year. I certainly enjoyed and was enlightened by reviewing each of those and, and thank your administration for doing that. Uh, but I wanted to ask about the hiring of a city controller and what the present role of Cinder and Company is.
Sure. So Cinder and Company, we'll start with that one, was hired because of their experience, their reputation and their expertise in financial issues. I've certainly dealt with them on the county level. They have helped a number of our city departments, certainly before this administration, and we feel that they are absolutely up to speed and competent. What wasn't, uh, certain is that prior to this, that we were able to make that claim. And so in terms of a timeframe for hiring one, unfortunately, I can't give you any specifics today. The goal first is to straighten out our financial disarray. Secondly, uh, we will put a national, uh, search out or at least a notification or posted notice for, once the, um, opportunity or the right time arises. But Councilman, this has to be put in perspective order and as you know, uh, to get an accurate accounting of our present finances is first and foremost, it, it's primary, uh, to our central existence. And, um, to that end, I'm pretty confident with the folks that we have in place now that they will be able to at least begin that. Let me, let me give you one example, Councilman. And so when we took office, there were bank reconciliations that hadn't been done in over a year. And to that extent, certainly the old controller and some of her staff attempted to do it, but I've got notice today that those are largely irreconcilable. And to that extent, this body will be extremely active in whatever developments come out of our finances because, uh, in addition to receiving the report, it certainly is going to cause for some action of this body. And that's the shortest answer that I could give you this evening.
Thank you. And I would just, uh, add as well, uh, that the budget process, I know that, I remember last year, uh, when I was not sitting on this body, one particular council member, I really encouraged, uh, the administration then or whoever the administration is going to be, to start the budget process earlier. I know it has recently been started October, September and, and that it's kind of a rushed process. And so I would really encourage this administration to start it, uh, much earlier. Uh, I'm excited because I learned last year, uh, that we have $250 million or so. I think there were flyers sent out, uh, that we'd have to work with. So I'm excited to see a much larger budget, uh, be presented, uh, to this body and how you all are going to use all those dollars, uh, that are reported in Gateway. Uh, and I certainly want an accounting of every penny of those dollars that were advertised to the public last year this time. Uh, lastly, the economic development corporation. I understand that there is a new one being developed. Can you give some insight on that?
No, sir. So I would like to speak to the finances though and, uh, the amount that you, that you mentioned, actually the figure was 180, uh, billion.
That's, that's good too. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, it, it was actually 180 billion dollars over an eight-year period.
Right.
But i- i- in any event, Mr. Uh, Councilman, I, I think that you raised a really good point in that, uh, you want to see an accurate accounting. And, uh, in terms of the budget, I agree, it absolutely needs to start earlier. And in fact, that's what we're doing now is preparing for our budget process. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case as you just clearly articulated and, uh, to that point, we're trying to straighten it out.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm excited and looking forward to it. Now, the EDC, you have no comment on that, right?
No, sir.
Okay. And just one last question, uh, have there been any communications, uh, with your administration and the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy?
So, um, it depends on the timeframe that you speak of, but certainly.
Since January 1, 2020.
I believe some of my team has reached out to them, absolutely. In fact, Corporation Council, I'm certain has had a couple of conversations with that particular entity. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions of the administration? All right, thank you Mayor Prince. Uh, is there any other business that the council would like to take up? Any other questions? Councilman Lee is recognized.
Uh, under normal circumstances, if I was contradicted by Charlie Williams, I would go along with it without any countermeasure, but he, he also contradicted you, uh, because you agreed with me. So what I will do, uh, is review, uh, and I'm sure, I'm sure he's correct, but in spite of that, I, I don't have a lot to do when we're not in council meeting. I will review the rule. I do not believe our rule restricts us to, uh, amendments by substitution. I think the reason that started is like at one point, the council was using lay on the table incorrect. So again, it was a, a fast way to simply say we amend by substitution, then they vote and then they vote the other way. But, uh, since he has brought in the question whether or not you are correct, I will review it and, and get back to you with the answer.
I really appreciate that, Councilman Lee. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have one of the.
Councilman Wetherspoon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just, you know, one thing I think that we need to think about as council members moving forward and I myself, you know, like to be very proactive in my approach, but at some point in time, we will be re-entering the council chambers. Uh, I'm sure not in the next month or so, but in the very future, in the future, we will be re-entering the council chambers. And the reality is this COVID-19 is not going to go away and as a matter of fact, they say that it may get worse and may come back. There are a lot of experts that are, you know, offering a lot of predictions. But with all that being said, I think that, you know, we should start thinking about what we're going to do from a structural standpoint with the council chambers, if it means putting up some type of plexiglass, uh, barriers between council desks, council tables, because it is a very small area to work in. So just, 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 you know, food for thought as we move forward that we have to consider what we're going to do so far as protecting ourselves in those chambers or even possibly moving those meetings to a larger area such as the Gen, such as the Genesis Center. Thank you.
Thank you. A very good point. We certainly want to make sure that we stay safe and that the chamber is sanitized and healthy for all of us. Anyone else? Councilman Brewer is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Mr. Uh, Councilman Wetherspoon's point, that was something that I was working on within the ordinance book, be put before the council, that we will not be all able to resume back into the council chambers. We will continue to use Zoom and no more than five members will be allowed to come back to the council chambers, uh, for the remainder of this year until we see how this COVID-19 is going to play out. Because it does put us all in jeopardy of not just each other, but taking this disease back home to our families at the same time. But I think it's a conversation that we need to have and have it soon about, um, how we're going to come back together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
It's been moved, we stand adjourned. Thank you and good evening.